You don't gotta explain to him, he already assaulted me inside the town hall. Touching is assault and battery. Doesn't matter if it's an accident or not, you still did it. You shouldn't have been close enough to touch me. Next time you do it, I won't rely on the police, I'll just take care of you myself, I'll defend myself. There you go. Have a good day, sir. At least you were civil, sir, I can at least give you that. Oh, I know, he touched me inside. I told him, he touches me again, I'm gonna knock him out. It was an accident, I don't care if it was an accident or not. You shouldn't have gotten so close enough that you touched me. What's that? Yeah, he tried to put his camera right in my face, and I was trying to walk around him, and I aimed my camera just to block my face and walk around him, and he touched me, and I said, "Don't touch me." What'd he say to that? Okay, 'cause I told him inside, he goes, "I'm gonna get a pic," I said, "Don't you dare touch her like you just did me." I didn't touch you, but then he meant it out here. Sorry, guys, my stream cut out. I had to restart it. Just the bad cops, it says bad in the middle. Yeah, we're not about goo- we're not, we're not against good cops, just bad cops. And I, and I got disciplinary records if you want to see one of your cops here in town. I got internal affairs investigation in my hand. I'm gonna be speaking about it again tonight. What's that? I've got a copy if you want it.
A copy?
Yep. Taken through open records. So just so you guys know, I'm handing out... I'm handing out internal affairs and complaints. What, what time is it? What's that? Okay, we got seven minutes left, guys, I'm gonna try to get inside. Are you coming inside, or you gonna stay out here the whole time? Dominique Anderson and Erica Lopez in the house. Trainee and corrupt officer. There she is, Dominique Anderson, badge number 223. They got some more shadiness that came across my desk about her today. Don't worry, guys. The exposure is coming. City wasn't serious enough last time, so... We got a ton of bootlickers in the crowd that think that these cops can't do no wrong. And the man of the hour, right there, Tony Kane. Chief of Police, Fire Chief, Director of Public Safety, Assistant City Manager, and the Vice Chair at Hill College. Extra, extra, read all about it. Oh, another bootlicker, another bootlicker. Let's see if they try to silence my speech this time. Over there conspiring, most likely. And look, they're bringing in more backup, probably just for me.
Okay, since I'm on the College District State Department, the Hillsborough City Council order. First item on the agenda would be the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, benevolent, and justice for all.
The crappy thing is, that doesn't mean anything to the police.
Next item on the agenda is your statements and first suspicion to address the council, you have two. First one, you're for the police, step up and stand. Please state your name and address. Understood, you have three minutes. You have a second individual, Basil GAKA EZ Watchdog.
Can, did you already hand those out to them?
Again, please state your name, your address, and again, please keep your comments to three minutes.
Sir, I'm in, I identify my name as Basil ZE EZ Watchdog, I'm gonna go ahead and respect my oath of amendment right now. Now, and not talk to myself, to the very people up here that show hatred to me today, especially two of them that are in here, comments up here. But I'll go ahead and start it, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you what I need to thank you. So I want to say to any mayor, city council members, and citizens of Hillsborough, that I haven't known or announced in this street, we know yet. My name is Basil ZE EZ Watchdog, I'm a civil rights activist, and I go by the name of EZ Watchdog on social media. Right documented exposed government as conduct. I'm here tonight to shine a new light on serious breach of public trust within your police department and to demand immediate action. On May 6th, 2024, Officer Roseanne Linder was disciplined for conduct so seriously resulted in an emotion, 10% paid for 40 hours of unpaid suspension and 80 hours of counseling. The internal memo describing her actions of unbecoming of an officer detriment to the department, I have a full internal affairs investigation right here, by the way. But the memo does spell out, both the community deserves to know, is that this officer Linder was drunk while off duty, found in a running vehicle while intoxicated, creating a danger to the public in this race for the badge. Any ordinary citizen would have been arrested for DUI and lost their driver's license. But because she wears her badge, and because Chief Tony Kane runs trouble for this conduct, there were no criminal charges, no arrests, and no transparency. Hell, most of you guys probably don't even know that it happened. This just gives it this conduct, it's a coordinated conduct. Tony Kane currently serves as the Director of Public Safety and Assistant City Manager. That's too much unchecked power in one man's hands. He used that power not to protect the public, but to bury this conduct and protect his officers from accountability. He concealed or should have been criminal offense, and in doing so, he has lied to the council and betrayed the public's trust. Meanwhile, the safety department is bringing in a new recruit, Officer Erica Lopez. Prevents little respectful young men and women who still believe what policing is supposed to be, but they're being trained in the department where cover-ups are normal and bad behavior is protected from top down. Meanwhile, let me be clear, this is not a common officer, this is not a department affected by bad leadership, and that starts with Tony Kane. So tonight, I'm demanding with this council generally, Tony Kane, from both of his walls, keep him in power since one message to the public. If you're powerful enough, you're untouchable. To the people of Hillsborough, if you have video, records, or personal experiences involving misconduct or corruption in this department, contact me directly. I go by EZ Watchdog online, I will help you bring the truth to light, even others try to bury it, thank you, I'll go ahead and get the rest of my time, thank you.
Put me along with the consent, consent agenda, delivering act on the approval of minutes from special and regular meeting on April 24th, and A6, 2025, act on the approval of bills.
Uh oh, who are you, I don't know you yet. Detective what? Penny? Oh, yeah, I know who you are. You said something to my friend earlier. I know who you are. Feel like I'm getting surrounded now. That's Dominique Anderson, badge number 223. I'm gonna go outside and check on Keebler, I'll be back in. Watch your six, I wouldn't want you to worry about your officer safety now. Oh my god, officer safety! I like fucking with that con, I can't stand that bitch. Man, you missed that speech, I pissed off a lot of people. If you wanna know what it says, I got it in writing.
I know, I'm, I'm, I'm at work, I'm just finishing this up, I'm on this job.
Oh, man, you got three minutes, that's all it took me to read that real quick. You should have seen all the shocked looks on their faces when they're... That's it, right there, just the one page. She don't look too happy.
Oh, yeah, she took out the yard there.
Oh. I just, she chab on me, I always wonder because of my topic.
Well, you, huh, I always feel like that. Especially doing this second project.
I just can't stand bad cops, dude.
Me neither. I understand, like, when they walk, when they rob by me, I just wave at them, I was like, "They robbed by me?"
I usually give them a burp. I got people that pay me to give them a burp.
That's where that guy was messing with her, well, he walked up to her, he said, "Do you, do you get paid, are you getting paid to do this?" I said, "Are you getting paid to do that?" And he kept looking over here. I was like, "Yeah, are you getting paid to do her?" Did he mess with her or anything?
He ended up leaving real quick, though, he didn't stay.
He was recorded, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Yep, that's, I like that, bringing new officers around.
Yep. And I just called all three of them out, 'cause I know who they all are, I'll look up their license before I come down here.
I heard somebody, like, one of them had a blue glove on, and they just had this one purse out, and a minute later, they come around and talk to the driver, and walk around the car, for some reason, and then come back to the passenger side, and asked the person that just told them, "Dump her purse out?"
Yeah.
And went into her purse this time, didn't he?
Yep.
And went to the person and had that glove on, and he's like, "Where's this?" And the man, "Did you just see me dump her all the purse?"
Man, I tell you what, I've seen so much stuff, I've seen people fixing the plant stuff.
Oh, man.
I've seen it in Burleson, I've seen it in Fort, Fort Worth.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I don't doubt that.
What's that, Keeb?
Yeah, he walked by you twice?
I know, I heard her say something about twice. Oh, they just had three officers come in on me, including Penny.
That's one right, that's one right there. They're busy right there.
No, the PD's over there.
They can't do it, they can't do one thing.
Nothing.
Well, let me rephrase that, they can.
But they can't. And certain hours.
But if they do.
Certain hours, they can't.
No, they can't any hour. No, if they do, they have a baker cake on their hands.
What? What? Religion, assembly, petition, press, and speech. It means assemble protest. What's that? What's that? You're in front of City Hall, you can do it all day, all day long, you're on the sidewalk. It says fuck bad cops, on one side it says shit, it's fucked up and stuff. Keebler's holding it because she was wronged by a bad cop, and he got a bunch of bootlickers inside. And they swarmed me inside with a bunch of cops. Last week, they had one cop and like, four that were like EMS come in there. So it just looked like they were EMS, this week, they got three uniformed cops. Minute I stood back in the corner, they had to jump up and flank me, so... So, she's over there, I'm at the main door, so I can hand people these internal affairs complaints if they want them. And I apologized earlier, but my signal, something happened to my signal earlier, so I had to restart the live feed. But hopefully y'all got to hear me speak. Did well inside, but didn't do well outside for some reason. I'm not connected to the wifi, though. No, he's not happy, he wasn't happy with me either in there. 'Cause I asked to fire him again. Well, they shouldn't have violated your Fourth and your First Amendment rights, so now you're really, now you're really, now you're really exercising them rights. There you go, make sure you aim it at that white truck. That one right there? Yep. Yeah, it, it, I think they got some sort of blocker or something, because it seems like I have a problem right here in front of City Hall, but inside, I had no problem, and I'm not connected to the wifi. I'm gonna stand in the shade a little bit, guys, I'm sweating, and I'm having a hard time seeing my screen. There we go. There we go. Hey, you know what's funny is... I think it's a thumbs up. The reason is, 'cause she was smiling. Another PD right there. So just so you guys know, they're swarming us, they got one sitting by the gas station, they got three inside. One just went by, and we got another one coming right here. Let's see if it comes to a full, complete stop. Wow, I'm amazed. I think they all drink off duty in Hillsborough. I think they all drink off duty in Hillsboro. Oh, that's a different question. Keebler danger, no sugar coating the truth. Some, one of my mods, put that in the channel, put her link in there. Yeah, it's definitely still holding down I-35. It's also holding cover up but there are police officers drinking and driving off duty and wrecking. Skyhopper. These people are waving and smiling guys, right here. Tell you right now, half the town loves the cops, the other half too scared to speak up about the cops. She says, "I don't think the cops are circling, I think the citizens are circling," that's funny. Look at this guy with no front license plate. But yet they ain't stopping that guy, but yet they'll pull over any type of poor vehicles with expired registration by six days. It's called selective enforcement. Case law against it. I'm gonna scoot this up a hair, see if you guys can read that. Hey, Otto the Watchdog wants you to hit the olays. There you go, Otto. Just to let you know, we have another branch of Watchdog news here, BZ Watchdog. Otto the Watchdog is over on the northeast side of Texas, we're over here in central Texas. Again, Watchdog News Network. Brought to you live by BZ Watchdog, reporting to you live in front of City Hall in Hillsboro, Texas. Make sure y'all put Otto the Watchdog's link inside the chat, make sure you guys all share everybody's links. Get everybody going. Here, hang on, I got something for them. Here, let me do this real quick. So just so you guys know, they're watching over here at the gas station. We got another one down here at the end of the road. So if anybody's gonna get violent, it's gonna be the PD, not us. Well, the bootlicker assaulted me earlier. He said it was by accident after inside, he said he didn't do it. So... Let's see, we got one down here, and then we got one down here. Sorry, the reason I was on the other side is because the damn NASF were getting me bad. Well, that's why I was over there, away from the grass and the bushes. But if y'all want to get a little Keebler action yelling, ole ole, there you go, look at that black truck. Do that, they might try to come out with some bullshit noise ordinance. Back to blue until they faceplant you, just ask Carolina. What's going on, man? Joel Cool in here? I don't know, someone said Joel Cool, I thought maybe he was in the chat. Well, just so you guys know, we're actually in front of Town Hall. It's where they're having their city council meeting where I was speaking in there before my signal cut out. So I will try to piece all this and put one video together of all this going on. There you go, truck with an open window, there you go. That's the kind of, that's the kind of crowd you need. There you go, she got some traffic going now. All these, all these bootlickers that don't want to look at the sign. The ones that aren't for the cops, you can tell because they're smiling when they read the sign. That was exhibition of speed, reckless driving. Where's a cop when you need one? Right there, sitting there watching us and up the road watching us. You got one over here watching us right there down the road, and then you got one right down here at the gas station. Oh no, no, when they're done, we're walking, I'm walking to the back. There you go, show him the sign. Watch out, there's one right there and one right there at the gas station. Hey, I think we ran off our bootlicker by the way. Stop there, there's a cop there and a cop there, don't roll the stop sign, no, don't do it, sir. That lady was laughing, she loved the sign. She was laughing. He has, he's been, he's been by here three or four times. She smiled, she's shaking her head, because you know what? She actually took the time to read the full sign. Ole, 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 ole. I got a thumbs up right there in that car. So we got some bicycles right here crossing the street. Not creating crime over out here. They're more focused on us than they are anybody else right now. I got, I got three officers and the chief inside, I got two more out here and one that's driven by. So all the cops are focused on us, which means they're not writing anybody tickets. They didn't want to handle it, we stepped it up ladies and gentlemen. We gave them an opportunity to take care of the problem two weeks ago. Now we, now we have, now we have literally upped the game. Now the question is, what are we gonna come up with next city council meeting? There you go. Ole, 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 ole. She smiled and goes, "Boo, lick it." You know what's funny is gonna be one of these bootlickers are gonna fly through the stop sign so they don't have to look at our sign? And then they're gonna get pulled over and try to blame us. It's gonna be our fault that they were speeding down the road around the stop sign. It was, it was a decent sized, the guy's property that I was... The guy that I was at this morning's house, he was in there. Yep, and he didn't like that, he didn't like that very much either. No, I tried to hand him this control affairs investigation, he didn't want it either. He condoned, I... I told him he must support crime because he's got a criminal cop. Don't run it, no, don't run it, there's two cops. For all 41 of you that are in here right now, thank you for the support. Thank you for coming in here, we're not done yet, but we do want to thank you since you are in here. Look at this, we got a bunch of traffic coming this way. This guy's reading the sign. He's laughing. What's going on, man? Back again, you went all the way for a drink, huh? Hey, just, uh, look, man, how old are you, man?
I'm seventeen.
Hey, you got parents here, I'm guessing at home?
Yes, sir.
Take the tour, this is how bad a cop did last year. They covered up the drunk driving, off duty, wrecking property and everything. All they did was give her this punishment, it doesn't say why she got in trouble. But then you go ahead and read this back here. There's three pages, it's her eternal affairs investigation admitting to her drinking and driving. She admitted to it, they didn't charge her, they didn't do nothing, man. Slap on the best she got, a big meat spate station. So take that to your parents, man, how many pages I can give you? Take that, take that to your parents, show that, man. Yes, sir. We don't like bad cops, we don't mind good ones, but we don't like the bad ones. Look at her sign. Are they all done in there? I saw another one go by. This lady's leaving, I saw another cop go that way, I wondered if they're done, so I go look in the back. Yeah, they're all done, hey, they're all done, I'm going to the back. Hey ladies, by the way, if you guys do hear of anything, anybody that's scared to speak out, any stories? I go by BZ Watchdog on YouTube and all the other social media platforms. My email's easy, bzwatchdog@gmail.com. I don't have y'all on camera, I got you all on. Just trying to keep you all private because I don't want anybody to retaliate against, and we've only been here... Yeah, be careful, you got, you got... It's mainly because of me and her. Like we're, like we're gonna do something violent, we're peaceful people. Yeah, there was a guy that left earlier that's always here complaining about everything. He actually came up and touched me and like, kind of like assaulted me, I said, "Whoa." "I didn't touch you," and then comes out here and admits, "Oh, it was an accident." So what is it, are you gonna lie or what? You're for the police, but then you're gonna assault me and commit a crime in front of city council members? Yeah, it's, people are weird, man, I'll tell you. Hey ladies, y'all have a good night. I'll try, no promises with the police swarming. Alright. Have a night, councilman. Don't run the stop sign though. I mean, they'll just cover it up anyways for you. Who is, the cop? He's got his wheel turned this way too. It's probably because he saw me walking towards the back. I'm going towards the back. As Carolina would say, let's see what kinda trouble we can get into. Ain't that what she says? Time to put the pressure. Time to put the pressure on, we got hawks. We got hawks going on, people in support of fuck bad cops on. Huh? Yeah, he's been running it. They're looking like little scared piggies at the window looking at me. Hold on, I'm gonna mute this real quick. We'll see what we see. Hey, they didn't want to listen to us the first time, we stepped it, we're gonna step it up again. Peacefully. Huh? I got an extra copy of that internal affairs investigation sir, if you want a copy. Anderson's disciplinary records are next. I'm coming for you Anderson.
Hey bud.
Hey, it was good seeing you man, like I said, I try to keep stuff peaceful man.
Yeah, yeah.
But I try to keep people informed like you're doing with the economical side, and I appreciate what you're doing for the city. I know you didn't get a copy whether you care, you read it or not. That just lets you know about that officer's incident last year. The one guy that was sitting there, I reached out to him this morning about the property because they wrecked his property. He didn't know it was an off duty officer, then when I told him it was, I'm investigating, he goes, oh he's, you're that guy that's fucking, he gets off my property. He didn't even want to hear anything after that. But he seemed legitimately upset that it was an off duty officer that had wrecked into his property last year. And they covered it all up man. And I'm pretty sure the city council doesn't know about it, well at least now they do.
Right, right.
I mean, if it was you or me driving drunk, we, we would have gotten arrested. Lost our system, you know, all I'm asking, they screw up, hold them accountable. If they're gonna do the right thing, then kudos, you know, but,
Yeah.
You know, I'm not, I'm not anti, I'm pro good cop, I'm anti bad cop, and we've got a few bad apples that I'm getting reports on. One of them is right there, I'm getting more reports about this one than anybody else. I mean, I got three more complaints today. One of which, I was in Hubbard when I got the complaint.
Oh wow.
So, yeah, so I, I'm looking into her. She's, she's on my crappy list and because she's training new officers, that's just bad for our new officers. Because I, I met all the new ones, they seem to be fairly nice and professional. A lot of the ones on the lower tier, polite, professional, courteous, just doing their job, but all the other ones, hey, what'd you say his name was, Hinkle? Hinkle, yeah, that's it. Six zero zero three SH twenty-two. It's on public record with that property report. Criminal cops, these guys support criminal cops. Do you think the chief will give me an interview? I'm waiting on the chief, I want an interview. Hey, two weeks ago they had an opportunity to fix the problem. I let him off the hook easy last, last time. You got city, you got, you got him right there. Right there. Right there guys, waiting, I'm wait, I'm waiting for comment. Guys, I'm just waiting for him to come out. I think he's trying to walk out the front door. Where does he park that, because I didn't see him? Oh, is he parked over there? He's hiding. I'm just waiting to see if uh, the chief wants, what's that? I know. I wanted to see if he's got a comment when he leaves. We're just waiting for him to step out guys, got some choice questions we need to ask. We may have it right here, I think he's getting ready to leave. Have a good evening. Long as they don't jam me up, I'm good. Have a good night Megan. Be careful, careful. Have a good night folks. They're coming for me. Here all those sirens, they're coming for me. We're just waiting currently for the chief to come out so we can ask him a few questions. What's that? Sorry, keepers throwing some comments out there. He ran back inside, here he comes folks. Is there any reason why you uh, didn't charge Linderman with that drunk driving last year? Do you condone all your criminal cops to falsifies police reports? When's the last time you drove and drank? No comment sir? Probably safe, invoke your fifth. What's that? Oh Dominique's in there hiding, there goes the Hillsborough cop right there. This swarming. Mr. Mayor, how you doing sir?
I ain't got nothing against you or your career, I'm just trying to, trying to take care of, I, I just, that's why I came with the receipt sir, I believe in having receipts and not false allegations. If this situation were this uh, Amy Howell, it never happened, I wouldn't be in town trying to, trying to get this corrected. I just want to let you know we're doing a piece of it.
Hey Dominique, how many uh, how many more police reports are you gonna falsify? You gonna keep training all your officers to lie on citations like you did with Brittany Garner? I got receipts, I got facts. The exposure will come out. Don't teach her how to lie on reports. Have a good night by the way. Did you guys get a copy of it by the way? This was just uh, just what I was just bringing to light that they covered up on one of the officers that was being lied about. This one is another problem right here, I'm working on her right now. You got stories?
No. We run a farm camera.
And you're fearful, and then you got no fear retaliation for that one. I actually was in Hubbard today and heard a story about her from some random person driving by. I was at a tire shop. How do they know her? That's how bad she is. Anyway, I'll get this kid around. This is, yeah right. This is Linderman, this is the one that Miss, Miss Amy here violated her fourth anniversary amendment right by, did you guys see the video by chance? It's online, um, you can go to BZ Watchdog, I mean, you guys reach out to me, I can send you guys the link. But this is the punishment she got, and I talked to Megan Henderson, the city manager. And she said she knew about the right of, though I asked her the important question. Did you know why? She said no. So there's the three page internal investigation where she actually admits to drunk driving and wrecking someone's property. On the, on the, on the east side of town by the way, three miles out like um, south, south, uh, state highway twenty-two? In Burnham. Sorry, I'm from out of cities, so I don't know how to counsel cities, but, um, this is the three page report and on this backside, this is actually her statement in her own words. So this is the commander up here writing the report, and then it certainly, she actually admits to it. Forns? I, I, some, you gotta remember this was a year ago when they investigated it. But DPS was found knocking on her window in her driveway. Passed down with the vehicle running after she drove and wrecked. Two people's property, in fact, uh, one of the guys were here tonight? Yeah, Miss Linderman. Roseanne Linderman, she was demoted to corporal last year. That, that other page I gave you? This is her punishment, she got a week vacation. With a demotion, ten percent pay cut and eighty hours of counseling. If that was you and I, we'd be in jail and lost our driver's license. I have a problem with that, and then Tony covered it up. So, you don't gotta, I don't want you to say anything that, but I, I'm, I'm just,
We've been here eighteen years, I've been part of the farmer's market for twelve, and the more that we, we ask, yes, and then we go, our, our big thing is, yeah. Our, our county commissioner ripped out our culvert.
Did you see her sign?
Yeah, I did. And four months ago they ripped it out because they said we were non-compliant, so my husband looked at that, but it was for new homes only, our house was built in nineteen eighty-two.
I'm gonna tell you when I find her now, just from what I've seen, I haven't made it to the other stuff yet, but I'm starting to get worried. Police department's the problem, then you got code enforcement, oh wait, what are the two comments, oh Tony King. Um, and then you got public works. And I'm having some other things and they're utilizing this one. The evil cop, that's right Dominique, two two three. Dominique Anderson. Erica Lopez, don't learn from her, she's gonna get you in trouble. She's gonna get you charged with thirty-nine oh three, official oppression, abuse of office. Don't worry, criminal complaints coming, you just wait, I'm really good. Ask the lieutenant in Beverly Hills because he's being investigated by the Texas Rangers, you're next. Hey, by the way, ten eight, get your asses back to work. Ten eight, let's go. Over and out, ten four, code four good buddy.
Well, good luck.
By the way, it's good meeting you sir, ma'am.
Y'all have a wonderful day.
Wait, what are you gonna do, wait till I pull out to retaliate, is that why you're still sticking around? You're teaching her great. Come on, how many reports have you guys falsified? Oh, don't roll the window up, no comment Erica? Come on Erica. Hopefully y'all ain't DE hires, she's pretty, you're just mean. Ten eight, let's get back to work, I'll let you back up in safety, in the name of officer safety, back it up.
Don't do it, you rolling stop.
Make sure you use your turn signal.
Turn your lights on.
There, there's the turn, oh, no turn signal Erica, shame on you.
No stop either.
Oh, Texas gal's in the house, I hope she heard that. Alright ladies and gentlemen, what do y'all think, do you think we are done to roll out of here? Hey, can you turn that down so I don't have an echo? I don't think they were happy me calling their first name. I am zoomed out, dude. That's as far as it goes, man. I got Brownie Boy right here. Brownie, sit down. Seatbelt's on, because you know they're gonna be retaliating coming out of here. Seatbelt on.
Tried to put the seatbelt on, it wouldn't snap.
Dominique and Erica, D-A-E. I called them a DEA hire, I said, "She's beautiful, but you're just mean." Smokey's like, "I'm going the other direction."
We're gonna wait for him to come out. We're waiting for him to come out.
Brownie, put your seatbelt on.
Brownie, you need to put your seatbelt on, buddy. Here, I got him. It just keeps tightening up on me over here. Hey, stop. Hey, Smokey?
You're gonna have to...
Put that in the buckle. There you go. That way it'll stop beeping. Brownie's gotta wear his seatbelt.
I don't wanna troll the...
Alright, Brownie, put your seatbelt on. Come here. Put your seatbelt on. Nope, not, 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 sit down. Sit down.
Stop calling me.
Put your seatbelt on. A lot of times, he'll turn around and put his seatbelt on, but... Alright, guys, y'all in the comment section, what'd y'all think? How many of y'all were...
I say if you want, stop outside of town, so I can get ice and everything.
Yeah, she needs to get ice before we go into town here.
I say, boy, before you leave, either, like I said, I don't know if you wanna stop in town, so like I said, I'm good with, uh...
Get out of my town is what I think on Poco Loco. Is that, is that a bootlicker that was there? Or is that someone just playing around in the chat? Oh, man, I had to give y'all something at the end of that, y'all waited so patiently.
There's one watch.
No, on, no, on Poco Loco, it's not that you disagree, it's that you're closed-minded and believe that cops can't do no wrong. That's what makes you a bootlicker. Or, when you get in trouble, "No, let me lick your leather, let me taste your leather so far down my throat, that I just don't, please don't give me a ticket, don't arrest me, oh, I'll let you search my car, just let me go." That's a bootlicker, dude. Hey.
Hey.
Sit down. Brownie. What was he barking at, by the way?
Kitty cat.
Oh, he just wants to play. Right, sit up. If my seatbelt wasn't tightening me down right now, I would reach forward and grab you by the fur.
Hey.
Sit down. Hey, on Poco Loco, I didn't block him. I just called him a bootlicker and he got offended. Well, guess what? Free speech, bitches! That's how I beat a disorderly conduct, free speech, bitch, as long as it doesn't incite violence.
You know, I don't think Patrick liked my, uh, thumbnail.
I think he was trying. I'm gonna have to piece those together cuz my stream got cut. So, you guys will have to, I'll piece it all together so y'all can see that, uh, bootlicker assaulted me before the meeting started.
Oh, that was a Hill County.
He's always parked there.
Yeah, that's his house.
Monica, free speech, like calling the chief of police in Hubbard today and getting hung up on. I guess he didn't like free speech cuz he hung up on yours. Is that a po-po right there? That's po-po, bright baby, right there. Circle in the block. Circle in the block. That's Tony! That's Tony Kane! That's Tony, he's on his way home cuz we know where he lives, but I can't dox his, I can't dox his house. Can't dox his house cuz I don't do that, folks. I don't dox people's addresses.
Nope.
I don't dox people's phone numbers. I will dox their name and their T-CO license. Cuz it's a matter of public record. You can find it easily on the T-CO license. I take that, Monica, that's, that's, you know what, Monica, you know what that deserves? Here, I don't really know you, but you know what? Since you went out of your way for that, I just made you a standard moderator in the chat. Gloria Add, uh, her channel is Keebler Danger, No Sugar Coating The Truth.
I, I don't know if y'all could hear the music on the stream that I was playing, but all that came off of my stream, off of my channel.
Just because I call you a bootlicker, doesn't mean I'm censoring your speech. It just means you like to taste the leather. I can't help it. To me, it's gotta be a really disgusting taste or an acquired taste, because I can't swallow the whole boot. I can't do it.
I can't support officers drinking and driving.
You know, drinking and driving as an officer and getting caught. Now, if you drank and drove and didn't get caught, and there was no evidence, and you didn't damage no property, you know, and you made it home, and it went under the, under the radar where nobody knew about it, it's not that I condone it, but I wouldn't be pressing about it cuz I wouldn't know about it. But the fact that you, there was a three-agency cover-up, and the city manager didn't know why she got written up, that makes me start answering the question, why, or why not?
And how many of them have flashed their badge?
And how many other ones exactly have flashed their badge to get out of trouble? And then the next question is, how many more did Tony Kane sweep under the rug?
How many never got IA complaints?
Or how many complaints got refused from being taken? So these are very good questions, folks, that you all need to be asking yourself, including the bootlickers in the chat. Why?
Book your town, cuz I guarantee, if you're in a small town, the same things happen in your town.
I mean, I don't even condone eating and driving, but guess what? That's legal. Just not drinking and driving. Why'd you go the long way, Barry?
Unless it's a Dr. Pepper, or a Mountain Dew.
Are you stopping at the QuickTrip?
Or a root beer.
You wanna go closer, or do you want QuickTrip?
Oh, it doesn't matter, I didn't know if he wanted to actually stop.
That way, if, if we get swarmed at the, if we get swarmed at the gas station, I got more content. Hey, I ain't driving. I'm gonna ask him if I'm free to go, so I get out of the car. I'm gonna ask if, if Brownie's free, cuz I hope, I hope you're not detaining my dog. What's, what crime have you suspected my dog of committing?
Not wearing his seatbelt.
He's wearing a seatbelt. He may not be wearing it properly, but it's worn, he's got a seatbelt on.
He wants something to drink. He probably won't eat anything.
No, I, I can't get what I want here.
What do you want, Barry? Oh, he wants to stop at Dairy Queen.
You want anything?
Nah, I'm good with my water, appreciate that.
I still owe him a couple of things.
Leon Valley corruption report is so old, man. Our new Leon Valley is right here in Hillsboro.
It's gotta be, uh...
Brownie Boy. I already know, Leon Valley's old news, dude. Alright, guys, I am gonna, I'm gonna stay live just until we get out of town, and then after that, I'm gonna end the stream, but... You let, you let me know how we did. I mean, like I said, the stream cut out like twice, I had to restart, but, you know, I had a bootlicker assault me. Well, you, you, you be safe, Monica, and you, you take care of yourself, and hope everything works out for the treatment, and I, and I appreciate the support. You know, Monica, if Monica has a channel, make sure y'all get over there and sub to her, get her her 50 subs, so we can make sure... Anybody here that wants to be able to, just be able to pop on a livestream, so that way, you know, okay, you never know when you're dealing with the cops, man. Even if it's just a traffic stop and you're not a cop watcher, you should be able to go live, so you can record it, so that way if something happens to you, it's live on the livestream, so somebody can get you out of jail. Nobody needs to be sitting there.
I got so many subscribers.
Well, Pink Taco, put it, put it in, everybody's gotta guess, get a hold of friends and code, but I always try to get people their 50 subs, just in case. I got enough people in the chat, you can pretty much get some of the 50.
You don't have to have the notifications on.
He's like, he's like watching for Keebler. She went inside the store, so he's kinda watching. You wanna crack the window for him, Barry, cuz he really wants that window? He just wants that fresh air. Give me a thumbs up. Or something in the chat, give me a one in the chat for, for Brownie Boy here. Me a one in the chat for Brownie. Hey, that guy was in a city council meeting right there, they just went in.
Turn mine off.
He's just watching for Keebs. Clay Foundations 1A Press with a $1.99 super sticker. Appreciate that. Somebody put Brick Jonesy, AKA Clay Foundations 1A Press, in the chat with a link to his channel. You haven't seen Brick's channel yet? Make sure you go right on over there. He's got one hell of a story that started in Lee County, Florida, and he's just going down the rabbit hole, and it just keeps on going. Thank you, Pink Taco, for putting that in the chat for me. Man, I gotta go piece that city council, that, that was crazy. That was crazier than the last one. It's alright, we're gonna find a way to step up our game, though, guys. We're gonna be stepping up the next one. Only two people spoke in public comments, and mine was the only one addressing the corruption and cover-up. Hey, you know what the crazy thing is? The city manager was driving, you know the city manager was literally driving in like a little Ford Escape or Fiesta, whatever the, I think it was an Escape. I don't even think it was that big, to be honest with you.
Oh, it's funny.
She was dri, what's that?
It's kinda funny.
It's kinda funny that she's driving, a city manager, who's running the city, is driving his little practical, little Ford Escape, or whatever, it's anything smaller, SUV style. Driving that little itty-bitty car, but then you've got the person that works underneath her. Bless you. $2 super sticker from Gloria, thank you, thank you, Gloria. But yet... But yet, you've got, you literally got, sorry, I'm over here thinking about what I'm gonna say, you got the, the, the chief of police, and you got the fire chief, and you got the director of public safety, and you got the assistant city manager, and the vice chair of Hill Cow, uh, Hill College, which is all the same position, Tony Kane. He's driving all these big, fancy, luxurious vehicles. How come a city manager don't have a, a big fancy vehicle? How come he's got this $150,000 freaking Tahoe slash Suburban? He's got all these other vehicles he can drive, but she's driving her little Ford Escape.
It is, did you notice the year?
Oh, it was old, it was kinda old, too.
I'm just kinda wondering, you know, where the, uh, the public safety fleet view of Ford Escape is.
Well, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Yeah, like a small...
There is...
Chocolate shake.
That's Whitney, I know, they're really getting it serviced.
If I could, a small, uh, ice cream for a doggy.
Oh, someone's getting a pup cup.
He must've been a good boy.
No, no shake, that's, nah.
No, never mind.
Just a little vanilla ice cream, but nah, that's it.
You have any vanilla ice cream?
No, it's fine. Just get it at Dairy Queen or something, that's fine.
Okay, never mind.
Just give him a little small vanilla shake.
Nah, I don't wanna give him the milkshake.
I get a medium now. Alright, thank you.
That ice cream's softer on him than that milkshake. You don't need some, I, I got, I got a bowl or something like that at the house.
They got shakes and, and malt. Malt for the thick ones.
Did everybody see me question Tony Kane, call out Dominique Anderson? Man, I got three more complaints about that woman today.
Mayor wouldn't talk to me, he wouldn't answer my question.
What question was that? Cuz he came over and said something to you.
I asked him if how many officers were caught drinking and driving. He said he couldn't talk to me.
You know why, right?
Because, I know why.
Cuz there's legal litigation going on with your name attached to it.
I just wanted to get the question out there. I was doing a Carolina, I was asking a question.
I shook his hand and told him if they had taken care of what they need to take care of two weeks ago, we still wouldn't be here. Hey, roll down that window a little bit, cuz he, I don't know what his deal is. He already went out to the restroom out before that city council meeting, so I know that ain't it.
He mad, he heard that there was no...
Yeah, Gloria, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna give him milk and get constipated. I don't mind him getting a little bit of ice cream, but that's cuz it's like, he'll lick it and soft and nice and cold, and he either won't eat it all, or... I just don't want him having a tummy ache and getting constipated.
He gonna make us some more signs up for the next meeting. That is if the people show me the affection. And I will put a, I will put some, uh, Eric Brandt middle fingers on some signs along with it.
Why don't you get your own style? Why you copying everyone?
I, I put in the chat, I said, "Many," "she's a many auto," and he goes, "I'm proud." She's many.
I'm a, I'm a Eric Brandt, Brandt Davidian.
Yeah, but I mean, when you were going, doing the...
Keep the name alive.
Stuff, that's auto. That's why I put in there that, "she's a many auto," and he goes, "I'm proud."
If I could, if I, if I decided to do a sign, think while I'm out there, I think what I'm gonna do is just do one sign that says, "Back to Blue," and on the other side of it, "Till they faceplant you, just ask Carolina." Ask CFW, "Back to Blue, till they faceplant you." I just wanna hurry up and get out of Hillsboro so I can end the livestream. I'm not ending this livestream till mom out of town, man.
Well, remember, Megan did say she guaranteed...
I don't care, her, her fucking, her effing word doesn't mean shit, because look, she doesn't even know what's going on in her own town. Dude, I'd be, I'd, I'd get pulled over and buried somewhere, and she wouldn't know what happened. They covered it up, you kidding? They just tell her that, "Oh, well, he said he was leaving town," yeah, in a body bag.
Found you in a ditch somewhere.
Found him in a ditch.
Five miles outside of town. Actually, you just have to be three miles outside of town, and they're all covered up.
Brownie, sit down. Brownie, sit down.
Sit down.
Brownie. Sit.
Well, I'm just glad that Patrick decided to either livestream this time, it taught him something.
Is that what he was doing out there?
I don't know if he was livestreaming or videoing or what.
He was trying to take my picture, I put my phone right in front of my face to capture him, then he bumped me. I said, "Don't touch me, he just assaulted me." Bro, you used to see how quick he'd jump back when I said that.
Who was the two that walked out with him? Was that the scoreboard members?
I don't know, I think I scared Patrick pretty good. Dude, that's the bootlicker, right? He sure left pretty quick. After I embarrassed the crap out of him.
Maybe that's why they, uh...
And then he went outside to confront you, and then your shit says, "Fuck bad cops."
He got it.
He didn't know what to say to that one.
He didn't like what was said on my sign, it offended him.
Well, tell him to go back in the little cave he came from and cry about it. Tell him I didn't realize he lived in Nazi Germany in 1941, where you can't say what you wanna say.
Well...
That's probably why there, there might've been that many cops, because of the way his attitude, cuz how he was acting.
The chief is the assistant city manager.
Correct.
Not the city manager, the city manager can fire me.
No shit, Barry. We've only been saying this for a month. Where have you been? Okay, Captain Obvious. Alright guys, I'm gonna end the live stream, so there's no incriminating evidence of me beating the crap out of him. So...
Ow, ooh, ow.
Okay, Patrick. Anyways, guys, I am gonna get out of here. I am beat, been a long day. I appreciate everyone coming in. And, uh, everyone that's coming in, I appreciate, I'm gonna put this in, I'm gonna put this video together and release it probably, I don't know, later this week, or, what's today, Tuesday? I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get it out by tomorrow. Be on the lookout for my body cam footage of me getting arrested back in November. Think I'm gonna premiere that Friday afternoon, Friday evening, so be on the lookout for that video, guys. I'm gonna premiere it, it's an hour and a half long, uh, just nothing but cover-up, misconduct, and the truth. After I got handcuffed and my, and my live stream went down. That way you guys can see the truth, everybody's saying that I did this, that I did that, and I was guilty. You guys will see them conspire and make up charges, okay? Random hog hunter, you're not watching, why not, man? It's an hour and a half premiere, you can always go back and fast-forward into whatever parts you wanna watch. But anyways, guys, I am gonna get the hell out of here. Appreciate the $2 super gift Gloria, the $1.99 super gift Brick, and, uh, I will call you guys later. See you on the next live stream. Peace.